Welcome to the June 4, 2020 Board of Commissioner meetings. Please silence your cell phone pagers and electronic communication devices. If you need an agenda, they are at the back of the meeting room here on the bookcases. Next, we'll have a moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance by Gary Drews, please.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next, if we could, I'm going to take a point of privilege. We'd like to have Barry Tice, Sheriff Tom, Willie Wetzel, Brian Mueller, Mike Coole, Cindy Chapman, and Lori Wagner up front for a minute. Mike did it.
I think you've been called out.
So, Pennington County, we have some pretty exciting news. We received the award for National Treatment Award for the Care Campus from NACO from Washington, DC. And with your help. And as a commission, we think you're pretty amazing of what you've done for our community. And I'd like to read what has been sent to us, if we could. So, this is from Washington, DC. Pennington County Care Campus has been recognized with an achievement award from the National Association of Counties, NACO. The awards honor innovative, effective county government programs that strengthen services for the residents. NACO President Mary Ann Borgensen said, "We are seeing firsthand now more than ever that counties work tirelessly to support our residences. This year's achievement award-winning program showcased how many counties build healthy, safe, and vibrant communities across America. Nationally, awards are given in 18 different categories that reflect the vast comprehensive services counties provide. The categories include children and youth, criminal justice and public safety, county administration, information technology, health, civic engagement, and many more. This has started in 1970. NACO's annual achievement awards program is designed to recognize county governments' innovations. Each nominee is judged on its own merits and is not against other applications received." NACO recognized that the Pennington County Care Campus with 2020 Achievement Award for several reasons that are directed demonstrated as being effective, collaborative, and problem-solving. The Care Campus has reduced the burdening impact of misdemeanor crimes by 70% while maintaining public safety and offering probable solutions to an identifying condition within the community. The Care Campus is a model for collaborative efforts across multiple agencies. As mentioned, the Pennington County Sheriff's Office, Pennington County Health and Human Services, Behavior Management Systems, and Rapid City Police Departments are co-located in a centralized location where efforts are greatly impacted by the collaborative nature of the Care Campus. The Care Campus provides citizens of the community with a great opportunity to receive necessary services in which addiction, substance use, and mental health conditions can be addressed with vital resources needed to overcome issues associated with recovery. So, congratulations. This is a pretty awesome award, and we're just proud of all your efforts and your hard work that all of you have achieved and many more in our community. So, I think this is a pretty awesome award. And, Commissioner, would you like to say a few words to our people that have worked for us on this Care Campus?
Madam Chair, as I said earlier this year, you guys have made me a believer. I love the numbers that you're coming up with and just appreciate what you're doing and all the hard work that you put into this. So, thank you.
Outstanding work and great collaboration between the various departments and individuals. Keep it up.
One more person we have forgotten, Ms. Holly. You should be standing up there with this group. This was a suggestion by our commission, and Ms. Holly followed through. And as you see, she did an amazing job at bringing this all the way through to get this award. So, Ms. Holly, Hennings, you are also recognized in all your hard work and everything you have done for our committee as a commission and for this committee that got this done. Thank you, Ms. Holly.
I want to express my thanks to Holly, too. She did a great job on it. But all of you have put this together. And as you know, we've had a number of legislators from throughout the state that have toured the Care Campus along with other county commissioners. It receives top rating every time somebody comes through and understands what you're doing there. So, appreciate all your efforts that have gone into that.
I, too, want to thank Holly for her work and the commission for supporting this. You know, one of the key things with this program and all the work that you guys have done and where it's at right now is to recognize where this has all come from. This comes from a house that started out on Silver Street many, many years ago with Holloway and some other people in the community as detox. And with the community coming together with nonprofits, faith-based communities, you guys all collaborating together to get to where it's at today. And it's amazing and it's outstanding, not only for the state, but as you now see, for the country. The National NACO recognized what the work you guys are doing. And that says a lot about our community, how we work together across the board to achieve what everybody wants, which is a collaborative effort to reduce recidivism, reduce jail population, and so forth. And you guys are doing an outstanding job, and I want to appreciate you guys. Thank you to the board.
Bottom line is, it takes a team in order to get this done. And you guys have been working on this a long time to get where we are today. And to bring this building forward with the commission before us and with you folks here, this wouldn't have happened. So, we appreciate everybody that made this happen for our community. And we have a lot of negative happening right now. And this is something very positive, showing that, you know, we do care about all people in Rapid City and Pennington County. We take care of everybody. We do it right, and we achieve the best we can for everyone in our community. And you guys have shown that over and over again. So, does any of you have any words to speak on this award?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Of course, an elected official on a microphone has something to say. I just want to thank the commission, too. Without the funding early on, and of course, we had philanthropy support that shows remain anonymous, so just acknowledgement to them. But it does speak to the collaborative nature of our community in over 3,100 counties in the US, and we get picked and recognized. So, it's pretty cool for our community and all of our partners. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Barry, Willie? Barry better speak first because we got Willie next.
Very good point. And I don't have a PowerPoint. So, thank you, of course, for your support. It's always pretty awesome to see how Pennington County and the city of Rapid City were on the innovative side of providing services to some of our most vulnerable population and looking at doing business a different way. And without these partnerships that we have within that building, within our community, this would never be possible. So, we appreciate your support, and it's awesome for what it's doing for the folks we're helping. So, thanks.
Well, Barry, your team is amazing, and even through COVID and everything they have done at this time as well. You went above and beyond on helping our community with your team at the Care Campus as well. So, it continues, which we appreciate as well. Willie?
I'll just echo what's already been said already. Thanks to the commissioners that are sitting here today and commissioners before you that supported this and seen the vision and the dream and helped everybody involved put it together and make it happen. And there's a lot of people in this community that back this project or are involved in this project that are not standing here today, and we want to thank them for all of their support and continued support. And I would tell you that I can personally say, working over there as I have since we've started all this, we are making a difference and we are impacting lives. And that's what that building is all about. And we have an excellent staff that continues to come to work every day and work hard in tough times. And so, thanks to all the staff that's over there that make sure the doors stay open 24/7. And so, again, thank you.
Thank you, Willie. Brian? Mike? You did a lot of work on that building, you and your team of people as well.
I guess I'd just like to add thanks to the commission, this commission and past commissions for supporting this project. And I'd like to mention that also, the building committees, the past and present, played a big role in this, and they should be recognized for that.
Nice. Ms. Lori?
I'll just say that my team worked really hard on that project as far as software developers getting numbers and the reports for Barry and the hardware group on the technology side. So, I thank them.
And sometimes, we forget to recognize the IT team, and they do an amazing job throughout our county, let alone on this project. So, we appreciate you as well, Lori and your team and everything you do for us in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for that point of privilege. Now, we'll have a review and approval of the agenda.
Don't move.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll have the consent agenda. Ms. Holly, please.
Good morning, commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items being removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 19, 2020. To approve the renewals of the retail on-off sale, malt beverage, and South Dakota farm wine licenses as presented. And to release the licenses upon payment of appropriate property taxes. And that was submitted by the auditor. And finally, number seven is to acknowledge the recommendation for appointment of Ms. Catherine Johnson and Mr. Charles Johnson to the Pennington County Planning Commission for a term of three years.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Is there anybody from the public who wish to remove any items five through seven today? If not, if there are any commissioners who would like to remove any items from five through seven today?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
Item six.
Number six from Commissioner LaCroy. Any others? If not, can we approve the rest? Number five and seven, please.
I'd make that motion to approve five and seven.
Commissioner Drews?
Second.
First, and Roskinck, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number six, Commissioner LaCroy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention that I'll be abstaining from the liquor licenses that have to do with the corner pantries with MGLs as I am employed with them.
Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
By DeSanto?
Second.
Seconded by Drews. All in favor, say aye with one abstention. Commissioner LaCroy, please. Say aye, sorry.
Aye.
Motion carries with one abstention. Number eight, please. Need to open this, right, Holly?
Yes, commissioners, this is the advertised date and time for sealed bid opening for a tax-deed property located at 825 Taylor Avenue in Rapid City, South Dakota. The county did receive one sealed bid, and Commissioner Hancock will proceed to open that right now, and we'll read the results.
Pennington County is the treasurer's deed owner of parcel of real property located at 825 Taylor Avenue, Rapid City, South Dakota, and legally described as Lot 3, Block 14, North Rapid. Edition, property ID number 26965. The parcel is a .08 acre bare lot with access and utilities at a lot line. The parcel was appraised on April 29, 2020 at $1,500. And I, the undersigned hereby bid, $2,570, is given to David Bressel for the parcel at 825 Taylor Avenue. So, do we have a motion? Is that what we do, Holly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
To approve.
Moved by DeSanto?
Second.
Seconded by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Mr. Taylor, you own some new property. Thank you, sir. Holly, do you need to give this to Mr. Taylor?
We'll take the paperwork and...
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Congratulations, sir.
Appreciate your persistence.
Very persistent. Number nine is a first reading and public hearing of ordinance number 714, an ordinance of the imposition and collection of the wheel tax, Pennington County. Gary Drews, please.
Madam Chair, thank you. Well, as I stated in early 2019, that I would be bringing a wheel tax ordinance for consideration by this commission. The time has now come to present that proposal. As we were told last year by our Highway Department, and again, just two weeks ago, there's not sufficient dollars for the construction, reconstruction, and repair of bridges and roads in Pennington County. This is not a new issue, but the longer we fail to provide adequate funding, the further behind the county will be in providing necessary road and bridge maintenance. This is a current public health and safety concern for our traveling public that will only get worse if we fail to implement a plan now to address the issue. Just a brief history. In 1985, the South Dakota Legislature adopted statutes permitting counties to implement a wheel tax to assist counties with their financial needs, especially for roads and bridges. Since that time, 58 of the 66 counties adopted a wheel tax. Pennington County chose not to adopt that tax. Until 2015, all counties were given the opportunity to apply for grant funds from the state or federal government to assist in maintaining, repairing, and replacement of roads and bridges. In 2015, our legislators chose to adopt a new statute which divided the available funds into two pots of money. The only way for a county to access or apply for funds in the local bridge improvement grant fund, called the BIG Fund, is to have implemented a wheel tax. So, in 2015, Pennington County Commissioners adopted wheel tax ordinance designed to generate about $2.4 million annually. This would then allow the county to apply for funds from the BIG Fund. However, this was referred to a vote, and voters overruled the county commissioners. When adopting the ordinance, the commission also voted to remove $2.2 million of property taxes from the Highway Department in their FY 2016 budget to be replaced with the wheel tax revenue. With the defeat of the ordinance, that $2.2 million was permanently lost for the Highway Department. Consequently, each year since, with an aging infrastructure and inflation, we have fallen further behind in funding necessary repairs and replacement of bridges and properly maintaining roads. We currently have 127 bridges located on county roads in Pennington County. 21 of those bridges are currently determined to be structurally deficient. That's right, deficient. And 10 of those bridges have load limits imposed for public safety. We have 88 bridges needing replacement in the course of the next 25 years. I'm also reminded that last year alone, we had two bridges fail. One collapsed, and the other was determined to be too dangerous for further travel, and both needed to be replaced. It is clear that additional funding is required annually and is necessary for public health and safety due to the poor conditions of so many bridges. The wheel tax will spread the responsibility of paying for roads and bridges from the amount property owners pay to all potential vehicle owners. Wheel tax funds are necessary to support the county Highway Department in its responsibility to maintain and repair bridges and the 837 miles of roads in the county. This should have been adjusted in previous years, and since it was not, there is now an immediacy to generate additional funding sources. I am proposing this ordinance as necessary for the support of Pennington County government and its existing public institutions, and to declare an emergency to exist, and for the wheel tax ordinance to take effect upon publication. In comparison to the 2015 ordinance, I am proposing a modest wheel tax to not exceed $2 per wheel and a maximum of $24 for vehicles of 12 wheels or more. It is estimated this will generate approximately $1.347 million annually. In addition, it will allow Pennington County to apply for funding grants through the BIG Fund. Pennington County residents pay into the BIG Fund, but currently, without a wheel tax, we have no way of applying for any dollars to come back from that fund for use by the county. We have no idea how much Pennington County may have received from the BIG Fund during the last four years since we were ineligible to apply. As the Rapid City Journal pointed out one year ago, quote, "The bottom line is that one way or another, taxes are going to pay for bridge repairs and replacements. It's clear that a wheel tax is the best route to take," end quote. This wheel tax is necessary not only as a means to secure necessary additional revenue for the Highway Department, but also to maintain existing funding needed to prevent a shriveling of present sources of revenue. Any further delay in generating additional revenue for bridges and roads will have devastating consequences to the Highway Department's ability to make county bridges safe. Our county infrastructure is at serious risk if we do not acquire the revenue necessary to properly maintain, repair, and replace those roads and bridges that are our direct responsibility. As per South Dakota law, all wheel tax revenue collected within Pennington County stays locally in the county and is not remitted to the state and is required to be dedicated solely for the construction and maintenance of roads and bridges. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner, do we have a motion or do we have discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
In the past, many of you have heard me speak about wants and needs, making decisions based on wants and needs. And while I don't like to bring up the past, I believe that we've made some decisions in the past that spent money that could have been used towards these bridges, particularly in our decision to pave South Rochford Road. I don't like to bring up the past, but I think that it's important for us to remember the past and remember the decisions that we're making because these bridges needed to be repaired four years ago when we made that decision to pave South Rochford Road. And in my opinion, South Rochford Road was a want, not a need. Now, the bridge, on the other hand, on South Rochford Road was a need, no doubt about it. And I have no issue with the money that's being spent to repair that bridge or replace that bridge. But I will not be in support of this, not because we don't need the money. I know we need the money. Last year, we went to, Gary was involved in this as well, and I appreciate it. We went to legislation to try and get legislation passed so that we could get a half-cent sales tax. I believe that that would have been a better way to pay for these roads and bridges because it would have spread the cost, not just amongst our Pennington County residents, but amongst the many tourists that come to our state every year and also use our roads and bridges. And that would have been a better way to go. Passed the Senate, did not pass the House, and failed. Now, that may come back this year. It may not come back this year, depending on how COVID-19 has affected the budget and that kind of thing. But I hope it does come back. But, again, I won't be voting yes on this just because I hope, in the future, that when we make big decisions about spending large amounts of money, millions of dollars, to do something, that Mark DeSanto's little reminder of wants and needs echoes in the heads of the commission and maybe gives them a little extra incentive to look hard at the decision that we're making and whether or not that money could have been spent better elsewhere.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinck.
Yeah, just put the past aside. The past is past. We can't change it. Today, we can change the future. The future is, if we don't do this today, those bridges will be two years old. If we wait two years, they're going to be two years older. The cost to replace those bridges are going to be maybe 5% higher. I don't like taxes, no more than anybody else. I'll be the first to state that, and I can tell you've got a lot of tires. I look at the wheel tax as bridge insurance. If we can invest $1 and get $1.50 back, from an economic perspective, I think that's a no-brainer to the county. So, I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Commissioner LaCroy?
This is a very tough decision because as past leadership, we've talked about this wheel tax for the last couple of years. You know, and one of the reasons why, you know, when I come on the commission in 2016 was right after the one failed, and most of what I'd heard from the community is that, where did it come from? They hadn't had enough information out there. And through the years, through the discussions, I said, one of the biggest things is if this wheel tax comes up, that we get the information out there, we talk with the public, and so forth. I don't feel we've been able to do that at this point, to be able to educate the public enough about the needs. I would, I don't know where this vote's going to go, but I would suggest after this that we put it on the website, the presentation from Joe, just like we have the comprehensive plan and the virus updates, something that the public can go back to. You know, the virus kind of prevented me from being able to bring it up at meetings because we tried to schedule it in at one of the meetings and couldn't get it in, but I brought it up to meeting, and the residents had a lot of questions, and I haven't been able to answer those. You know, and for this reason, I'm not going to support it because I think we need to educate the public more on what's happening. And there's never a good time for this to come up. And I absolutely respect Mr. Drews because he said he was going to do it, and he's doing it, and he's following through, and it's the right thing to do. I mean, we have to, we got many bridges that are, that load limits are close to it, and there's never going to be a good time. My only concern was is I, we didn't have enough time to, I think, to educate the public. Now, it's starting because it's going to be in the papers and in the news. Now, we're going to have those discussions. But now, we only have two weeks till the second reading. So, to me, that's still not enough time. So, that's the only reason why I would be supporting it. But I do absolutely agree with Mr. Drews on his efforts.
Thank you, Lloyd. Joe and Mark, would you guys like to come up? So, the public is listening as well. A little bit more education in past history. Mark, you've been with us a long time, so you know the history and how much these bridges are taking a toll on your budgets. Maybe a little more education on the Rochford Road. That was federal money. It wasn't something that was given to us to use on bridges. So, that was matching funds. Just some of that history so people understand why we're doing the wheel tax and why the Highway Department, of course, supports this because it's well-needed. Thank you.
Yeah. Chair, can I ask my question to start it off?
Yes, sir.
Joe and Mark, last year, we did replace two bridges that were unexpectedly lost, part of it because of flooding, et cetera. But I understand we have a new condition that arose yesterday, again, impacting another bridge. And so, you know, I'm not, as I look down the road, I don't see these issues going away without being able to come up with additional funding. So, appreciate your comments.
Correct. Commissioner Drews, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway. As Gary stated, just yesterday, we found a bridge out on Nemo that it is structurally deficient. We replaced two bridges last year. Thankfully, we were able to replace one with three culverts. The hydrology allowed that, so that was a cheaper option there. The other one, we chose to replace with a single-lane bridge due to its nature and location, having, you know, very few residents on the other side of it, so that was a cheaper option there, too. So, we are looking at ways to innovate and cheaper options to do these. Bottom line is, bridges are expensive. Roads are expensive. You know, you look at a mile of asphalt, last year, it cost us about $100,000 a mile to pave what we paved. This bridge yesterday that we found is due for some rehabilitation this year. We were replacing, I believe, 12-deck units on this bridge, but we haven't had a preconstruction meeting with the contractor yet. So, it forced us to at least close one lane. We'll have our engineer going out to our engineering firm, KLJ, to go We'll have our engineer going out to our engineering firm, K L J, to go out there and take a look at it and inspect it to make sure we don't have to close the whole thing. For that residence on Norris Peak and then going out further onto Nemo Road, it could be, you know, five, 10-mile detour, taking Norris Peak over to Highway 44.
So, Joe, just one question. How far does 1.3 million dollars, how many bridges does that get us?
Just the, the wheel tax. Money itself will probably safely, two bridges, conservatively, I guess, two bridges, you know, depending on where they're at, the location, if a detour is needed, if it, if it's not, the length of the bridge. There's several different factors that play into the cost of a bridge. So, those things, I would say, conservatively, two bridges.
So, if you did a half-mile or a mile of road, how much would that cost us when you're refurbishing a mile or a half a mile of road?
So, it depends, you know, we, we try and do maintenance, right? Bill has been wonderful for our maintenance program. We've got a chip seal program that we do blotter surfaces, which is a gravel surface with a chip seal over the top of it. We do those every six years. We do asphalt roads every eight years, and we crack seal every, what is it, Bill, seven years? Every four years, we, we do crack sealing, which seals the moisture out of the bottom and getting into the subgrade of those roads, which inevitably destroys them. And then we try and overlay, you know, every 20 to 25 years to totally reconstruct a road. I don't know the cost of that off the top of my head, but I do know we're overlaying Lower Spring Creek with a two-inch mat, which hasn't been overlaid since, I believe, 70s? Is that when it was, Bill? I believe it was in the 70s, and we've been getting by with the chip seal just due to the, the average traffic count on that. So, we, it's in dire need. It was on the docket for two years here, and we pushed it off and pushed it off because other, the funding was needed elsewhere. So, this year, we finally got a chance to, to get that paved. It was 8.3 miles, and it cost us $880,000.
Thank you. And there's also, how many bridges over 50 years? And I talked to Bill the other day when we were in a meeting, and there was a bridge that was 105 or 106 years old.
104, I believe, is how old that bridge is, and that's out on a computer loop. It's a, a concrete arch-type structure.
Thank you.
So, there's, as Gary stated in his, his speech there, there's, there's 88 bridges that are over 45 years old. Average lifespan of a bridge is between 50 and 70 years, depending on location and average daily count, average daily traffic count.
Mark, you've been with us a long time. We have needed money, extra money besides federal money and to help us in our budgets. And it seems like at this point, we would get help from the citizens that would actually be using the roads. So, do you see a need with all the bridges and the roads that you have worked with us for at least 30 years? People are going to ask, why haven't we done these bridges? And why are we doing them now? And why do, why haven't we moved forward in improving two bridges a year? Is it because of funding or is it because of work? I mean, what has been the holdup because of us needing this wheel tax at this time?
Mark Schalk, Pennington County Highway. The highway department has a large budget. It's around $9 million a year, 90, $10 million a year. But the, the road maintenance and bridge maintenance is very expensive. You know, your average maintenance costs, yearly, annual maintenance cost on an asphalt road is about $12,000 per mile. And we've got 836 miles. And so, keeping up with that is a huge expense. Your average bridge is now, like Joe said, close to a half a million dollars, probably on average, right at that. With 128 bridges, that's, that's a lot of expense. Annually, we have been spending somewhere in around the $700,000 to $800,000 a year on our budget. Spend about, on average, 10, 10% of our budget goes to bridge rehabilitation and replacement. About 10% of that goes to, of our budget goes to snow removal. And 80% or 70% of our budget just goes to the, the road maintenance. So, that doesn't leave much money for other places. Now, when we lost the 2.2 million in 2015 from property taxes, we had to reduce our, our maintenance. We kept on track where we were with bridges, pretty much, and the overlay program has, has taken a cut in the last few years. And that will catch up with us, with us also. But as, as Joe mentioned, you know, we, we have 21 structurally deficient bridges, and this bridge we found out about yesterday was not even on that list. Here's a bridge that one lane will be closed. Well, it probably is right now. We were going out this morning. We inspected it this morning, and, and we'll find out later in the day, as, as we reported, that the consulting firm that does our bridge inspections, this was last inspected in 2018, would be due this year for a bridge inspection, but they're going out for an emergency inspection today. That bridge may be closed by the end of the day completely. So, they, they sneak up on us. They're just a huge maintenance cost that we cannot keep up with.
Thank you, Mark. I just see this as a well-needed ordinance to bring through. Gary and the group that have worked on this worked very diligently. I think the information is out there. I think it was out there before, when I was on the board before, when none of the other commissioners were here. It wasn't more that the information wasn't correct. A lot of it was the cost. And so, they said, if, if you guys would have made that lower, it would have went through with no problem. So, Gary had listened, and this group had listened. They only wanted to, meaning when Gary and the group, meaning Jay and Holly and Mark and, and Bill and everybody in this group looked at this, they only were going to take the amount that would make a difference each year. They didn't over say, I'm going to take 3.6, and we're just going to move this up because we need this right now. What they're saying is they're going to be efficient and effective like the highway department has been, and this is what they can use right now, and it's going to make a difference to add every year, at least a couple bridges or fixed roads. When you don't have a bridge, or you have half a bridge down, or you have bridges down in your area, you're willing to look at this a little bit harder. You don't get it till it happens to you, then you're going, I, I should have supported that. I should have done that. You always can find money where people say wants and needs. I believe that, Mr. DeSanto. But in this case, you're talking about a highway department. If you look at their budget and what they do for us, is amazingly efficient. And if they weren't, I wouldn't be supporting this at all. And that the citizens, I believe, once they see the difference and once they see what's happening with this money, I think it's, it's a small price to pay for what's going to happen in this county. If you've ever seen our snow removal, I hear compliments since I've been in the city council with this highway department has done. Everything that they have done has been efficient. So, at this point, I will be supporting this because I believe it's well-needed. I think the citizens with common sense will understand that it's needed. It's $2. We all, some of us, we have companies that have a lot more trucks and different things like that. That's me. We have commercial and residential vehicles. I'm willing to pay that extra if it's going to make a difference. I'm a property owner that believes also that we all should share in that help for this wheel tax. So, like I said, I also, the bottom line is, I work in a beauty shop, and I did hear all the comments when I was here last. And the main thing was is, they could have done it, started a little bit low, see what was happening, show us what the highway is really doing, what's really happening with that money. That's the biggest, biggest thing. Oh, well, we don't think they need that much. Well, let's see what we can do with that 1.3 at $2 a wheel and show the citizens, you know, they got every bang for their buck. And I believe that they'll be like, oh, holy cow. And at first, people are going to be kind of saying, well, that's another tax. But once they see where it goes, and we're all like that, once you see where it goes, where my money was spent or your money was spent, and we can show them that, I think they'll appreciate it. And like I said, you guys, you guys are very efficient and effective, and I will be supporting this wheel tax for this highway department today.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I just want to address Commissioner LaCroy's concern about the timing. And I agree, there's never, there's never a, a good time for bringing in a, a new tax. But I just want to remind the commission that with, in less than two weeks, we start the budget, budget process for 2021, and we need to know whether this wheel tax is going to be in place to be able to collect in 2021 when we're doing the budget because it's going to make a big difference. If that's not in place, I'm going to have to be pushing, I think, for the highway department on additional property tax. I look at the wheel tax as spreading the cost to all vehicle owners and not just putting the burden on property taxpayers. And so, that's why I think it's critical that it has its first reading today, and if it's approved, we'd come back on June 16th for a second reading.
Thank you.
I just want to point out, you know, Deb, the, the 1.3 is, is great, and that's going to, to help us immediately. But the, the bigger picture is being able to apply for what Gary said is, is the big funds, right? We're, Pennington County is already paying into the big funds. We're, we're putting money into that fund with no chance to get any of that back. Now, what that number is, I don't think we're able to obtain that at all. I wish we could get that number, but since we can't, you know, I, it's, that's the bigger picture, is we're already giving other counties access to these, that have access to these funds. We're, we're giving that money away with no chance of getting it back. So, on, on top of the 1.3, you know, let's say we get two bridges a year or one bridge a year, there's a, there's a cap there. We can't get more than, I think it's $4 million in a, in a three-year period awarded to the, the county. So, if we get two bridges a year, that's another $1 million in, in bridges. So, I think it's important to point that out, that it's not just the 1.3 that's going to help greatly in our budget as well, to be able to not rely on those big funds because those are not guaranteed.
Is it, sorry, Joe, isn't the big fund, like, they distributed 50-some million to counties in South Dakota this year through that big fund?
Through 2019, I think.
54 or 56, something like that? That's a huge amount.
That's a close number.
That's a huge amount to get a piece of that we put money in, and you're, you're definitely right on that, Joe.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Should we adopt this today? Should we hypothetically? I would assume that other commissions can, can un-adopt it, or they can change it if it doesn't work. It's not like this is a perpetual motion. It can be modified by other commissions if it doesn't work. So, I just want people to realize that.
Madam Chair, I, I do have some further comments, but I would like to make the motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 714 as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Drews, second by Roskin.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I just want, a couple of things that I, I need to report on. Last night, I had a conversation with Tonchi Weaver, and Tonchi is the one that actually led the effort, I believe, four years ago to refer the ordinance at that time. And just a couple of things that, that she wanted to clarify on it. She was wondering if my intent was to put the wheel tax on basically all wheels because she did not see where it indicated that trailers, trailers that are pulled by other motorized vehicles, whether or not they were included. So, I did ask Jay at State Attorney's Office relative to that. Those trailers are covered under the state law, so they are part of it. And the other thing that I just want to mention that Tonchi was suggested is that we put some sort of a restriction in it to, so that it cannot be changed for a minimum of two years. And as I tried to explain to her, I felt it would take probably at least two years to determine how much money we may, may actually obtain out of the big fund to determine whether or not, how, how successful overall we're being. So, I didn't see that as a concern. The other thing is, is I don't think we can commit further, future commissions to something like that. So, but I, I wanted to bring it out because Tonchi was not going to be able to be here, and I don't think she's in, in attendance. And so, I did tell her that I would bring that point up.
Thank you, Gary. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak on the wheel tax today? Did we miss anybody in public? Okay.
Thank you, Joe and Mark. Madam Chair, I have one more.
Commissioner Drews.
Just so the commission is aware, there is a little bit of a programming glitch on this, if this is adopted. To be effective, to, to start really in, in 2021, obviously license plate tags can start being renewed two months in advance. And so, the November and December ones would not be able to be programmed on the state level. I understand that the treasurer's office, Pennington County Treasurer's office can do that programming, but there's a couple of areas where we would miss out on, and that is the kiosks and anything done online. So, it's a matter of a few dollars that we'd probably lose out on. I want to bring it to the commission's attention, but I don't think there's any major concern with that. And quite frankly, I don't think there's anything that we can do about it anyway. So.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. We do have a motion. Do we have any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I think I need to take the moment to, to thank Joe and Mark because they, they did make, go to a meeting with Mr. Roskin and have a discussion on this a while back. And so, it had been out a little bit. But as far as my vote today, it, it could change in two weeks. You know, the more information I get back from what happened today, and even the article in the paper, that plays the big decision. My biggest one is, is not being able to be out, be able to educate the public on what it is. And I know it's been about five years, so that, that's where I'm at for today, but it could change in two weeks.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I also would like to add that I am going to continue, after speaking with Gary yesterday, I'm going to continue to press the legislators that were against allowing the county to put a, a half-cent sales tax on. I'm going to talk to them and find out what their reasoning was behind trying to not allow that to happen. It's my understanding from Gary that the municipal league now would support something like that. And it just makes sense to me. It just makes more sense to spread that tax, that burden upon the millions of people that visit, and not just the millions of people. I mean, obviously, we'd be paying the half-cent sales tax as well. But we got millions of people that come to South Dakota every year that use our, our roads and bridges. And, you know, just alone, if, if, without the COVID-19, we'd have a million motorcycles running over the tops of these roads and bridges during the rally. And all of the, all of the trucks and all of the equipment that comes in every year during the rally that puts wear and tear on our roads, roads and bridges as well. So, I'm not going to just drop the ball on this. I'm going to talk to these legislators, see if we can get that brought back. And hopefully, if we can bring that back, it will limit the amount of time that if this does pass, that this, that we have to keep this wheel tax up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I might also point out that I make myself available to go speak to any groups that would like to hear the, the story on my side of the story as to why we need it to. So, I'm available.
Thank you, Gary. I know you have been in the community. You went to the newspaper. You went to other organizations before this to vent and vet that we were going to do the wheel tax. So, you have been out there promoting it, and you have been saying this for at least a year. So, I appreciate all your hard work and putting this forward today. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We have three ayes and two nays on motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 10, please. Ms. Cindy? Did she leave us?
Oh.
There she is. We thought you left us, Ms. Cindy.
Hi, morning, Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. I lost my paperwork and have some things shuffled around. Sorry.
Today is to move to approve supplement SP 20-008 to the general fund sheriff's office budget in the amount of $10,000 from current year revenue. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by DeSanto, second by Roskin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
You didn't need me at all. You didn't need me at all.
Item B is canvas of the primary election results. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Move by Drews. Second, second by DeSanto, um, La Croix. Um, Ms. Cindy, before we move forward, um, thank you for everything you've done for these elections. Your team of people, um, did an amazing job, um, worked very hard. This was a, kind of a crazy year. Uh, you went above and beyond, and so has your team, and, um, this Commission would like to thank you for all your hard work and your team's hard work this year to get this, this election, uh, where it is today, so.
Thank you. I'll pass that along, because I could not have done it without my team, as you put it, because they, they worked very tirelessly, and we had a couple of Commissioners that we pulled in to, to sit on the, um, boards out at the polling place. And I think that was a good experience for the Commissioners. I'm sure they learned a lot about what goes on and what our poll workers go through during the day. Nice. I think it was great.
Madam Chair. I'd just like to make the comment, yes, Commissioner La Croix and I both ended up being a part of that on Tuesday. Uh, didn't realize how much work there was actually to it. Uh, very satisfying work, I might add, though. And I would just encourage people that, uh, that may have never done this or participated, that we've got another election coming up in November, the need is going to be there for individuals. And, uh, please feel free to step forward and contact the Auditor's Office if you have an interest in being a part of it. It's a good learning experience.
We thank all our poll workers, and if I could make a, um, a suggestion to, to have a, a day to recognize all of those, I would do that. If we could bring them all in and, and celebrate that, how great they were that day, I would really love to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy. Commissioner Roskin.
Cindy, what percent do you think, uh, were mailed in this year? Just out of curiosity.
We had almost 14,000 ballots mailed in, and about 8,500 vote at the polls.
So can you put a cost to what that cost the county to do, do the mail-in?
It's over probably 21, 22,000 in postage.
You think we'll do the same thing in November?
I do, because a lot of the absentee ballot, um, requests that we got, um, whether people realized it or not, when they filled those out, they checked all elections. So they will automatically be mailed a ballot when we get ballots in for the November election.
So what percent out of the 14,000 do you think weren't done properly, where they didn't count, or?
Oh, that, those are the ones that were counted.
Okay.
Um, and I know we did have, and, and I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, how many that we could not count because of mismatched signatures or no signature.
I know that I've talked to people that like it, and people that said, I am going to get my card, and I'm going to go there and do it in person, so.
Yeah.
I've heard a little bit of both.
Madam Chair. Commissioner DeSanto.
Of the, the ballots that we mailed out for absentee ballots, how many did we not get back?
Probably about 4,000.
Wow, okay.
Um, and whether that was because they didn't realize that if they weren't registered Republican, they couldn't vote a Republican ballot.
Okay.
They received a Democrat ballot, and, you know, there was only one race, so they figured it wasn't worth putting the ballot back in the envelope and sending postage to mail it back.
Sure.
Now, there's about 4,000 of them that we did not receive back.
Thank you, Cindy.
Madam Chair. Commissioner La Croix.
I'd just make the comment that, uh, first of all, thank Gary, because he did it, and then I decided, well, I'd never done it, so I'll try it, and it was a good experience. Um, those poll workers put in long days, 14-hour days, 50, I mean, starting at 6:00 in the morning and then till the end at 7:00 at night. As Gary had mentioned earlier, you, when you're, you're the superintendent, and you have to go pick up the stuff, you don't have, if you're not prepared with the pickup, there's a lot of stuff. But the experience is good, and I know the two, I had two new ones, and I had one experienced helper, the poll worker, and thank God for her being there, because she helped me out a lot, and your team, because making the phone calls here to check on voters who've come down who are frustrated, uh, didn't know where to vote, or didn't know how they put their party, and so you asked, we were able to answer those questions right away at, at the spot. But, uh, yeah, you guys did a very good job, and you're right, I think the recognition of those poll workers, who I recognized for a long day, because they just can't leave for an hour and come back. They got to stay there the whole time, so.
There is no lunch hour on election day.
No.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cindy.
Thank you.
Next is items from the Sheriff. It'll be Chief Deputy Brian Mueller, please. Item A, sir.
Morning, Madam Chair. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff's Office. And, uh, we're here today to request a motion to fill an open booking tech position. We had an unplanned departure of a transport officer. We had an established eligibility list, and, uh, one of our current booking technicians was top on that list. We're planning to transfer her over, which would create an open booking tech position. Um, this has no, uh, impact on the numbers that we provided earlier for the cuts.
Thank you. Do we have a motion or discussion?
Move for approval.
Motion by La Croix. Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Items from the Treasurer. Our new Treasurer, just kidding. Congratulations, Ms. Janet.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners Janet Saylor, Pennington County Treasurer. You have before you the resolution for the $25 administration fee for title, titling of vehicles by mail. As you recall, a year ago, we had a gentleman that, um, we charged the $25 to, and he was from out of state, and he opposed this. So this year, we took it to the state legislature, and they passed, passed the bill that the Commissioners have the authority to establish the administration fee for certain titles and registration fees. Um, if you would like me to read it, I, I can do that. We are not charging the $25 administration fee for anyone in Pennington County at this point that is mailing in.
Okay.
So this would go into effect the 1st of July. It would not affect anybody that's just renewing their decals. It's for titles only.
Thank you, Ms. Janet. Do we have a motion?
I'd move to approve.
Moved by Drews. Second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Janet. Items from Bigle, Buildings and Grounds.
Good morning. Uh, Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds. Buildings and Grounds recently had a custodian walk off the, the job. We, uh, understanding the Commission is, uh, is as interested in, uh, maintaining Bill, uh, Buildings and Grounds ability to disinfect and clean facility, uh, cleaning our facilities during this pandemic, we're, uh, we're requesting that we have author, authorization to fill this position.
Do we have a motion or discussion?
Prove, second.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Roskin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Next is Emergency Management. Dustin, I'd like to say one thing. You have, uh, a lot of people in your, um, EOC these last few days with the, uh, protests. I went and, um, watched the first night that we had a lot of the, um, professionals in there, and what a heck of a job. Uh, I've never seen anything like that in my entire life. Uh, a team of people in, uh, um, first responders in every sense of the word, and your team, uh, working together and just, you know, keeping everything organized. You did an amazing job, Dustin, with the Sheriff's Office, Brian Mueller, um, Highway Patrol, Rapid City Police Department. I mean, it was pretty amazing, um, to watch. So I thank you and your, your team that was in there, and how organized you were, and, um, I stayed there, what, we had meetings from 2:00 to 5:00 or something, I stayed there till 10:00 at night, and it's not like they put an hour or two in, guys. They do this all day, so, uh, appreciate everything that your folks did, um, to help our city with the protests. We're still moving forward on those, sounds like, a little bit, but, uh, um, everybody has the right to protest, and we appreciate that. We just need a team of people to make sure everybody's, um, being kind to Rapid City and Pennington County, and that's what our first responders and our people and our team and Dustin's, uh, position and his, um, EOC room, uh, were doing, so, pretty amazing. Thank you, Dustin.
I just want to, I want to know how he had time during the last 10 weeks to get a haircut.
And Dustin Willett, Director of Emergency Management for Rapid City, Pennington County, uh, to answer that question, uh, Commissioner Drews, we had a protest, uh, that, um, was scheduled for noon yesterday, and a protest that was scheduled for, uh, 6:00 yesterday. Uh, and so I was able to sneak away for 45 minutes at 3:00 to get a haircut. But I just wanted to.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Mr. Roskin.
Who cuts your hair?
Well, I was going to, but he didn't want to buzz. He didn't want to look like Brian today. Just kidding. I'm teasing, Brian.
Commissioner Haggar, thank you very much, uh, for that recognition. I, I, I feel it's only, uh, appropriate to, one, say that we are humbled to be part of, uh, of an incredible team. Um, there is no one individual you can point to, no one individual agency you can point to. Uh, it's just an incredible team in this community, uh, that works for the betterment of all of our residents, visitors, uh, businesses, uh, across the board. It's just, uh, it's very humbling to be a part of this. Um, and I also want to, to point out, and, and thank you, Commissioner Drews, that, uh, this is week 10 of, of a full activation in the EOC. So while, um, ensuring that, that, uh, First Amendment gatherings are, are, um, supported and, and remain peaceful has certainly been an additional task over the last several days. Uh, we've spent weeks and weeks and weeks, uh, through the infectious disease, uh, situation that we're working through, um, assisting the Auditor's Office, uh, in any way we can during elections, uh, working through the, the temporary emergency homeless shelter, uh, the, the list of tasks go on and on and on, and, and, um, uh, couldn't have done it without, uh, again, an amazing group of people in that Emergency Operations Center for the last 10 weeks, uh, all the staff in my office and all the folks that have come into work that. So, um, thank you for the recognition, and, and, uh, we're hard at it, and, uh, no, not necessarily an end in sight for, uh, for our operations right now, so second start of the right, straight on till morning.
Well, with COVID going on and the, and the protests, um, I can tell you, the first responders in every sense of the word, in the surrounding area, have been worked and overworked in a sense, because that's a lot to deal with in one situation, and it's not just been a day, it's been a week, so, um, that's just adds to.
Well, we don't like bad things to happen in our, in our community. We'd rather have blue sky days, but, uh, we're, 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 um, proud to, to put what we've trained and prepped and, and, and put in place. Uh, we're, we're glad that, that when the need arises, uh, we have, uh, a good answer on the other side of that equation, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I just want to thank you for bringing that up, about the EOC, because, you know, first responders, fire department, police department, we all know about EOC and the pro, the, you know, the room that we have back there, but the majority of the public doesn't, aren't sure what, is there a plan? Isn't there a plan? You know, you get those questions, I received a few of those questions, and they don't know that we're preparing for these events that happen, and we have a group of people who are trained and, and watching and to be prepared. And, and that's good to know, that Ms. Haggar recognized you, and you're talking about today, because the public needs to know that we do plan for these events, whether it's a flood, a protest, or the virus, we try to have a plan in place to, to move forward, and, and we're looking out for public safety.
And they do have, uh, Commissioner La Croix is right, they do have, like, the state involved, the Governor's Office, which, um, again, I didn't know, uh, the whole extent of it, and the National Guard with, uh, General, um, Marlette. It was just, again, it was just amazing to watch the team of people and how it unfolds and how it so, um, keeps everything in place, is a good way to put it. So it was pretty cool.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I'd just like to say, I had the chance to observe an EOC, um, during an earthquake back in 1989, and, um, sometimes I curse technology, but after going in and sitting there and watching what was going on in our EOC for an hour and a half the other night, uh, now I'm thankful for some technology, because, uh, it's amazing the difference between 1989 and now as to what we can watch and keep track of, and know what's going on, and the communications between one another are instantaneous, rather than, um, maybe finding out a half an hour later that, that something happened somewhere, you know? Uh, so I was really impressed with, with, uh, just the commute, the, the efficiency of communication and, and, uh, and the video that we were able to observe. Um, it was really quite cool.
Thank you. And, uh, I just, again, it's, it's only appropriate to note that none of that would be possible without the support and the investment of, uh, of elected officials and leaders, and, and budgetary support, not only for the office and the facilities, but for the staff and the training. So, um, uh, we're, we're proud of what we're able to do, and we're only able to do that with, uh, with the support that we've had, um, from both city and county leadership. So thank you for that. In terms of COVID-19 update, relatively short and sweet, uh, we've, we've been holding the line for, for months that the infection, uh, that, that the disease would progress through our community, uh, and all of our trend lines certainly indicate that that disease is moving through our community, as, as I stand before you here today. Our trend line is going up, our curve, as, uh, everyone is, is, um, pretty aware of that vernacular now, uh, through the press, uh, but our curve is, is on the uphill side. So, um, I think, um, I don't know if we have the, the new numbers updated, uh, but, you know, about 257 cases currently in Pennington County with 80 recovered, uh, so still, um, you know, well, well north of, of, uh, 100 current active cases in Pennington County. The number that, and, and again, from the, from the get-go, the hope, the plan, all of the infection control measures that were put into place was to prevent the, uh, healthcare system from being overwhelmed. It was never about not getting sick. It was never about stopping the virus in its tracks. It was always about making sure that our healthcare infrastructure was able to provide, uh, services to those who needed it. Um, and, uh, again, as I stand before you here today, uh, our healthcare system, uh, all of the players in our healthcare system in West River are, are keeping their head above water. Um, they're having to work, uh, they're, they're, they're certainly, um, enacting some of their surge plans, and, and, uh, it's, it's an all-hands-on-deck situation. Um, but the numbers that we look at really are, are, uh, the beds, uh, the numbers of in, of infections that are, that require hospitalization, and, and what the hospital facilities, what the beds, what the staffs, what the specialty, specialty equipment, uh, where those levels are. And, and, uh, right now, uh, we're, we're able to, to, in this community, provide the services that need to be provided, and, and that's the, that's the most important thing in terms of, of this infection as it moves through our community. But as we talk about, uh, the next items on the agenda, um, I think it's important to remember that, that, again, it was never about stopping the spread of the virus, it was about, um, controlling the rate of infection, uh, so that we didn't overwhelm our healthcare system.
So Dustin, the things that are on promotions on the next set, should we vet it through the department heads next Thursday first, or is this something that we need to do today?
Uh, so I would, uh, defer in part to, um, uh, Ms. Hennies and, and, uh, our HR office as well, John, um, in terms of where they're at and what, what they would want to see come forward and, and what their feelings are on it. Uh, I think talking with the department heads, uh, specifically about what this looks like and, and timing, uh, would be appropriate, and I'd certainly support having that conversation with, with all the department heads in that, in that meeting, and, and kind of get a, a sense of, of where we're at and where we're headed and what we think. I would, uh, you know, the, uh, our operations are what they are. Uh, we've, we've been doing what we've had to do over the last 10 weeks, and we'll continue to do that to, 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 um, you know, affect the lines of effort that we're working on in the Emergency Operations Center. Uh, you know, from, from EM standpoint, um, you know, and I think it's, it's recognized by most that we don't want to, we don't want to yo-yo with opening and closing. Uh, we don't want to open and, uh, to some degree, and then, uh, oh, you know, now the infections are higher than we thought, and we want to close again and open again and[1753.26] higher than we thought, and we want to close again and open again and close again. I think we all recognize that that's probably not the most strategic approach to how we serve the community. So I think that needs to be certainly taken into consideration, and then certainly we need to look at cost benefit in terms of the measures that we might put in place to change our current infection control posture, one way or the other. It's always that cost benefit, how much more effort or inconvenience go into different strategies, and what's the benefit on the other side of that equation. So, I think having those conversations of the department head will be beneficial, and I'll stop rambling there.
Well, we kind of did that last time, and it seemed to work, and then the next meeting is Thursday, and if we were thinking about, if we were going to do a soft opening, if that was going to occur, it wouldn't be till July, like, July first. So, I think it still gives us time to vet that through there, but let's hear what, John, if you'd like, sir, first, and then Ms. Hennies, in case I'm misunderstanding anything at this time.
Commissioners, John Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. So, thank you for the discussion this morning. I agree that doing this at the department head meeting again next week would be a really critical part of whatever decisions that we end up making. Some of the things, though, for consideration, again, the soft opening schedule, I do have a tentative timeline using July first as that, so I've got some documents that I'll share with you after the meeting and then prior to the department head meeting again. It's similar to the material we had at the May fourteenth department head meeting, just with updated dates. Some of the things that we should consider and/or discuss is, again, as Dustin related, what are the aspects of that opening process, the cost-benefit analysis, the processes to be involved? And there's different opinions all across the country, so I've been on numerous calls and different web trainings for the last few weeks. Some counties and cities are doing it very structured with regard to, everyone is mandated, they have to have a mask in order to enter the public buildings. Everybody is taking temperatures in those very same cities and counties. Others are not, so it depends on the risk level that we're comfortable with, I guess. So those are things that I think we need to discuss. Notices to employees with regard to positive tests are a big component of this as well. I do have one of those drafted, and we did have that occur earlier this week that we learned about yesterday.
Oh, John, just one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just in general, like, if Janet had someone test positive.
Right.
She has to take that whole group out of there, and don't they have to be quarantined for fourteen days?
Not necessarily. So, not necessarily. So, it depends on how that positive occurred, depends on the person that was positive, the amount of interaction, where they had worked, what they had done in the department, how much time people actually spent in close proximity. There's a number of factors that go into that, and that's all, once you're notified that someone either is potentially positive or does test positive, there's a number of steps that you go through before you actually determine what's the appropriate follow-up.
So, by chance, if that happened, then, I mean, have we talked, remember, we talked about that at the department heads?
Yes.
Hopefully, they have an action plan at that point, because I don't know what you'd do if it, you know, took out.
You back, because that would.
Auditor's office.
That would be very problematic, not only for the employee group, but for the operation of the county. That impacts not just that small group, but every citizen, that means their services.
So hopefully, we're doing like half and half or different things, especially because the peak is supposed to be the fifteenth of June and that kind of thing, so.
Correct. That's correct, Madam Chair. So, again, some of the things that we need to discuss, and again, at the department head meeting, and then for further review at the June nineteenth or sixteenth, possibly. So, I'm looking at the calendar thinking this is Thursday instead of Tuesday. But work, station spacings, scheduling of employees, the remote work arrangements that we have right now, honestly, those, if possible, should be continued if it's not disruptive to the departments. There's other aspects of it that we still need to be considering. So, with regard to the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and the Emergency Paid Sick Leave and Expanded Family Medical Leave, some of those things will still arise. So I brought some data. We ended up having thirty-two employees that had either been partially or fully furloughed. Twelve of those have returned to the workplace and/or are working remotely on a complete regular schedule. We still have twenty that are either partially or fully furloughed. We had seven people apply for either Emergency Paid Sick Leave or Expanded Family Medical Leave. Of those, six were approved, one didn't qualify, they were on our excluded position list, those essential employee positions that we had identified. Of those six that did qualify, only two are still on leave, the other four had already returned to work. So the process is working, I guess, and that's the piece that's very positive. I think those tools are in place to help our employees and to help the citizens. They were being used very judiciously by our folks. We've got a very dedicated group of employees and dedicated group of leaders. These folks want to be at work, they want to do their job, they want to help the citizens, and we didn't see that flow towards the paid leave that other entities have. Again, that's kudos to our group and to the leadership here.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Pardon me for a second, John, but I just, I just want to applaud our employees that when they have the opportunity to return to work, they're returning to work. I just think that, I can't say enough about, I'm just very proud of them, and I wish that and hope that the general public and employees throughout Pennington County will return to work when they're asked to return to work. So, thank you, Pennington County employees, for returning to work when you're asked to return to work.
And, John, all your work through this COVID-19, you've gone above and beyond finding the rules and regulations and trying to help us all through this, even though some of the things we don't always agree on, John, I do agree at all times that you work very hard for Pennington County, sir.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Roskinick.
What concerns me is I think our county had ten to twelve when we decided to, around March thirtieth, we kind of shut the facility down. Now we're spiking, we don't know where we're going to be next week. Could that soft opening extend past July first if this thing keeps spiking? Because to me, it seems that it should.
Sure, and I would agree. So it depends on how things progress over the next few weeks. The July first is actually a tentative timeline that we're hoping for. Even if we did the soft opening on July first, I think there's processes that we could implement here that would still minimize the risk to citizens and employees. So you've seen, on the second floor, for the most part, all the customer-facing, not all, we still have a couple of departments without it, but that clear vinyl plexiglass barriers, the sneeze guards, if you will, for our employees, those are extremely helpful. Again, the rotating shifts, people coming in early, people working later, spacing people not within the office, having people use their own headsets, their own keyboards, rather than sharing and moving, those are all pieces that have helped us be successful with this. I would say that the vendors that I've spoken with over the last few weeks, software vendors, et cetera, they were completely in awe that we were still working in our facilities. We were the only county that they had spoken with where that was true. So, again, that's a kudos to us and to our employees and what they've done and made possible. The fact that we're able to continue business as much as normal as possible is really a big thing, so there's much to be said for that. There's, again, processes to put in place, the screening, the jury's out, does it make sense to take temperatures? Depends, were they standing in the sun recently? Is it going to be accurate? Are they, you know, so there's different reasons to do that or not to do that. I don't know that there's any one solid answer. Do we ask people to wear masks when they're here? Again, this will protect the people you're interacting with, not so much for yourself with most of these cloth face coverings. There's a benefit to that, but is it worth the extra challenges that might create for some families that don't have access to those when they come for our services?
So, John, what are you asking us to do today, sir?
Yes, so I think there's a couple of things. So we did approve some things at past meetings, and I brought some of the documents. We approved on April third to limit personal transportation or travel, excuse me, and allowed the departments to require people that traveled outside the area or to areas of higher infections that they could allow or require their employees to work from home for two weeks or take two weeks off. Those weren't official quarantines, they didn't qualify them for the EFMLA or Emergency Paid Sick Leave, but with regard to how the viruses have changed and now migrated into our direction, I don't know that that really is effective to maintain. So just, just something to think about, I guess, is maybe to revise and/or remove the travel restrictions for personal travel. On April tenth, we approved a couple of things also, and one was suspend all reclasses and promotions in the rest of this calendar year, fiscal year for twenty and twenty. I think that we're seeing those things are still occurring, whether they're through executive session or before the board, and I don't know that they were done hazardly before, and I don't know that our budget situation is such that that would be something that we'd have to maintain moving forward either. So I, just food for thought. I think, just for consideration, I wanted to bring those up as potentially things we could change at the June sixteenth meeting and say, okay, this is no longer necessary. But I think we'll have more information on our budgets with regard to how things are progressing by that point, and we could actually make changes. What I would like to do today, then, again, is just make sure that we're understanding what provisions are out there as far as possibilities with regard to workforce spacing, scheduling options, things like that, and then with the understanding that we should bring that to the department heads and get their feedback with the decision, then, of some type as to an actual target date for opening, and then procedures to be implemented when we do decide to open.
So, John, when we do the wage study, then, are we having people, like, do reclassifications and stuff now in order to prepare for that? Because I would hate to have reclassifications, and then, once they reclass, then we go to the wage study, and we didn't know, we just moved them up four to six steps instead of one step. Is it, trying to be, you know, fair but still look ahead without saying anybody's doing anything wrong in one sense, but the other is just, you know what I mean?
I do.
Setting up for the next step is good in one way, but it depends on what that, where that goes.
Yes, no, I agree. So the things that I've seen come through anyway, and please correct me if I'm off-base on this, but are more about more sequential promotional aspects, though, with regard to deputy sheriffs, deputy one to deputy two, correctional officers, one to two, other promotional positions. I haven't seen anything, or maybe I've not missed it or not noticed, but I haven't seen anything that's been in order to help move people up in preparation for the new pay scale.
So what I'm saying is, if you do a deputy one or two, do they have a new reclassification under the new study that we did?
Got you.
You see what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Where does that put them? What are they calling them next?
Sure.
What is that, what is that area where they're going? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Because you might not have a deputy one and two, you might be calling it something else on the next step.
Sure. Yeah, and again, the positions that I'm bringing to the board for review and approval to add to our structure, those haven't been anything that I've seen, any kind of a pattern where people are moving them up so they can be moved to something different in the new pay structure in January or with 2021 budget. They will only progress to the next step above where their current pay is. And as we've talked before, in some cases, that may be a few hundred dollars, in some cases, that may be a couple thousand dollars for their first year. It's separate from what this was.
But will they have a deputy, I should be asking Brian this, a deputy one and two?
Yes.
If that's where we're going to the next step? Will they actually, that'll be in the wage study already, it won't be changing?
Correct. No, those positions are static, they still exist.
Lieutenant deputy something instead of deputy one, you see what I'm saying?
I do, yes, ma'am. No, there's been no proposal for that to change or any additional steps or jobs.
It's just going to be their next.
It'll just be a continuation of what we currently have in those job groups.
Commissioner LaCroy.
John, just for clarification, you know, I have to go back a little bit.
Yes, sir.
When you're bringing up the numbers of cases and what we've had, how many employees does Pennington County have? I mean, that really speaks, how many employees does Pennington County have?
Oh, about eight-hundred-and-thirty.
So out of eight-hundred, the numbers that you referred to earlier are pretty, I think, are pretty minimal.
Oh, my, yes.
And so, my second comment is, yeah, I'd probably like to revisit the classifications at our next meeting because I think a lot of are just a step up, and I think it's appropriate. But, you know, one of the things I think about when we talk about these things was when you guys have the department head meetings, I think that's the real appropriate discussions for a lot of these things that are happening because those people know where to happen in their departments, and I do want to thank the employees and department heads for putting in the protective orders that they do have to keep things going, whether it's, it's a multiple of things to make people comfortable and to follow procedures. So I think the department head meeting is, should run about two hours, three hours, or what I think they have good discussions, so that's what I want to depend on.
No, thank you.
Thank you. So what would you like us to do today?
So, at this point, I just wanted you to be aware of the things that we'd like to discuss at the department head meeting, so you're prepared for some of that discussion. I'll get you copies of the material that I sent to the department heads as well, so you're fully informed as to what those discussions are, and then we'll be able to discuss and make some motions at the next Board of Commissioners meeting.
And I appreciate that, John. That way, you also, I had talked to Ms. Holly to make sure you have enough time to move forward in case we might have a soft opening. It's the goal for July first, but that doesn't mean it's happening, so, just so everybody knows that.
No, I appreciate that, Madam Chair. So, part of the challenge with making plans is that we have to find a way to make them work. So that would allow us time to do the planning, get whatever supplies we may need, and then get the communication out to the employees, so I appreciate that.
And with COVID, it could change tomorrow, so.
Yes, ma'am. No, that was it. So, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Did you have anything? Okay. Ms. Holly, did I miss anything, ma'am? All right, so item fifteen, please.
Good morning, Commissioner. Joe Miller, again, Pennington County Highway Department. Up first is item A, purchase both diesel and gasoline products. This is something we purchase off the state bid every year. The prices fluctuate daily. As of yesterday, about this time, the price for diesel was a dollar forty-eight a gallon, the price for gasoline or E-ten, so ethanol, ten percent ethanol, a dollar twelve per gallon. Several county entities and even state, the state DOT and the schools use our fuel, so the sheriff uses it, the weed and pest uses it, IT uses it, as I said, Reps, these areas, schools uses it, and the South Dakota DOT in Hill City uses it. So, when we purchase off that state bid, it allows, you know, it saves a ton of work on our part to not have to go out and solicit bids for this, so.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have a motion or a discussion?
Move to approve.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Drews.
Madam Chair, I need to abstain.
Yes, sir.
I'm Joe.
We do have a motion in a second with Lloyd abstaining. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item B, please. Thank you.
Item B is a, the last piece of right-of-way for Sheridan Lake Road. This is to obtain the new right-of-way on the Forest Service easement. There's about, well, Mark, probably what, fourteen months probably taking? And coincidentally, John Van Beek from Furbers is in the audience who did a ton of work on this as well. So, this is, we'll complete the last piece of right-of-way for Sheridan Lake Road, and then at the end of the project, after we get all phases built in July of 2022, an affidavit of extinguishment for the old easement will come to you guys as well.
Move to approve.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Roskinick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, John, and your team of people as well that have been helping us all through this. We appreciate all your hard work, sir. Item C.
Item C, this is a subrecipient agreement with the South Dakota Department of Safety which allows, basically, and I, not having any experience on this, from what I could gather, this agreement allows us to receive funding from FEMA for the disaster in May of 2019. I guess Dustin may be able to speak to that a little bit better than I could, but from what I could gather, that's what this agreement is for.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Roskinick.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Dustin, anything to share, sir?
I really, sorry. Nothing to add to the discussion other than Joe's absolutely right. He is a humble man, but it's simply paperwork regarding the FEMA reimbursement process.
Thank you. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item sixteen, please.
Item sixteen, I'll just go ahead and start this one off. John is in the audience to answer any questions. He did the major-
He he did the majority of the work on this, putting this together for our sixteen road districts, requesting a speed limit resolution by the Board of Commissioners. Long story short, without a resolution by the county commission, Pendleton County Sheriff isn't able to enforce the speed limit in those road districts. I think we brought a couple of these to you a while back and chose to bring them all back in in one. With that being said, we're in support of all of them. We'd we'd like them to be consistent with what we have in Pendleton County and and even in state statute, it states that urban areas, if they're not posted, will be twenty-five miles an hour. Some of them requested twenty miles an hour and and we're okay with that.
So we have eight road districts requesting twenty miles per hour, six that are requesting twenty-five miles an hour, and two that are requesting?
I believe thirty-five miles.
Another twenty-five, yep. So it's a total of sixteen.
Move to approve, ma'am, sure.
Moved by Roskinect?
Second.
Second by Drews. John, do you have anything you would like to share, sir? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That's a pretty big packet.
Lot of work went into that. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Sir, number seventeen?
Number seventeen is a speed limit request from Ms. Sally Heverline for the speed limit on Dunn Road to be changed from fifty miles an hour to thirty-five miles an hour. The the county highway department is in favor of this. The average daily count on there on the west end is a hundred and sixty-three cars a day and the east end is a hundred and thirteen. It is a residential type setting. There are some houses on there and and it's very much like Anderson Road and that first portion of Longview. So thirty-five miles an hour, we do feel is adequate. As always, the eighty-fifth percentile is around that, you know, depending on which end, thirty-six or thirty-eight miles an hour. So this speed limit is is not out of line at all.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Moved by Drews?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Ms. Sally, would you like to speak? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Number eighteen?
Number eighteen, okay. So this one, as the memo states, the highway department is not in favor of. First and foremost, I guess, there's adequate sight distance at this location for approximately a mile. And we feel that setting the speed limit here from one forty-fifth to Old Folsom Road would create a speed trap. Often, people are going to drive how they feel comfortable. We collected some data over the last week here. The eighty-fifth percentile, which is where we generally set the speed limits, the westbound, all vehicles going fifty-one point six miles an hour through that area, even with the tight turns, the gullies, stuff like that. The eastbound is fifty-one point three. The average, the average speed is about forty-three point or forty-two point eight. And then so exceeding the speed limit, we've got twenty percent of vehicles exceeding the speed limit. Average daily count is approximately three hundred and forty-nine. With all of that information, I'll get to some history. In two thousand and ten, a resident concerned about their their farm machinery coming on to and off of Lower Spring Creek requested a warning sign for the intersection. Pendleton County obliged and and installed a farm equipment warning sign with a thirty-five mile an hour advisory speed at the location. After determining the sight distance was at least five hundred feet, which in the Ash to design, which is kind of the the road design gospel, I guess, for for lack of a better term there. This sign has been stolen stolen twice. It's the farmer sitting on a tractor, so we replaced that with a hidden engine sign. That one has stayed there. So the thirty-five mile an hour plate remains. In two thousand and thirteen, a request was also made for a speed limit reduction and a traffic study was conducted in January. After the traffic study was completed, Pendleton County Highway felt the reduction in speed was not warranted at that time also. The study determined that the eighty-fifth percentile speed decreased from fifty-seven in an average of fifty miles an hour in two thousand and nine, so just over the course of four years there. Determine the farm machinery warning sign with thirty-five mile an hour safe speed plate has been effective in reducing the eighty-fifth percentile speed to to forty-nine miles an hour and an average speed of forty point three. So with that being said, this has been a longstanding issue all the way back to two thousand and ten. There is a large development out there. We kind of looked at the history of it. In two thousand, oh, two thousand and four, two thousand and five is when that was all Spring Creek Acres is the development that's that's going on or is mostly built out there, I guess. The the ADT went from roughly a hundred and seventy to a hundred and eighty to to the three forty-nine it is today. So it hasn't jumped a whole lot for that big of a of a development, so.
Joe, can you speak on the the second motion with that deny or request to shave down the hill?
So we've, I believe it was a, Mark says it was a Culligan that we spoke to last year at this time, probably not this time, it was a little earlier in the year, I think. We were out there doing something else and he approached us and and asked if he could shave that hill down. And he's actually moved his fence on that corner to allow that to happen. At that time, he was willing to do it himself. We said, yeah, that's great, we're in favor of doing that. You know, there's a power line that runs through there now. All he would need is a utility or, excuse me, excavation within the right-of-way permit. And he could go ahead and shave that down to allow his truck and trailer to to make a right-hand turn and not go into the oncoming traffic lane.
That in the right-of-way or his land?
There's sixty-six foot of right-of-ways, it would be a little bit of both. But the the big thing to point out there is we don't know where that power line's at. And I believe that power line cuts through his private property, so if that's the case, they're not, i-if we change the the road or the anything in the right-of-way and they're in the right-of-way, they have to pay to move it. But if they're on private property and they've already obtained an easement, we have to pay to move it. Or whoever wants to to shave that hill down would have to to pay to move that line, which can add up very, very quick. Another thing that I failed to point out here is there is no crash history at this location. No document, no documented crashes at this location. There may be several call or there may be close calls, but there have not been those crashes over the last, I think crash history goes back five, seven years. So with that, I guess I'll stand for any more questions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I went out and visited with Scott at that location yesterday. I would be in agreement, as Joe pointed out, with them cutting down that hill so that he doesn't have to swing into the westbound lane when he's going eastbound, coming out of his road with his semi truck. It's a pretty steep hill, so it it's not, you're not going to accelerate very quickly heading back up that hill. I think there's there's plenty of visibility from the visibility to the west. The visibility to the to the east, I would say, is questionable. Somebody comes over that hill at fifty miles an hour, they're going to have to slam on their brakes pretty quick if there's there's a semi truck in the middle of the road.
If I may, Mark, the the sight distance as per ASH, so I don't remember where that was at, but as per the the design manual is four hundred and I believe forty-seven feet, and there's just over five hundred.
To the east?
To the east, yes.
Okay, to the top of that hill.
Correct. The way we kind of measure sight distance, we'll we'll set a cone in the intersection and kind of creep up over that hill until you can see that cone, and then you measure the distance from there to the intersection, and that's your your sight distance. And in keeping in mind, a tractor trailer obviously sits a whole lot higher than a a vehicle, so they've got even further sight distance.
True.
Coming up out of there.
I don't, I'm not, I let Scott know yesterday that I wouldn't be in agreement with reducing the speed limit because I don't think it'd do any good. I think people are going to drive that fast anyway, doesn't matter. But but if they can, if they can shave down that that corner, as long as it doesn't create an issue with us having to pay for moving a power line, I have no issue with that at all. I think it would be a good idea, frankly. But this, and and I think maybe instead of, I know we've got the, what was the new sign that we put out there after they kept stealing the?
The hidden entrance.
Hidden entrance. I'm wondering if maybe we could put a a truck centering highway or something like that, if that'd do any good.
I would like to look at the MUTCD, you know, trucks entering. Generally, I guess I'd have to refer to Eric, but I would think, you know, you see trucks entering with logging operations, there's got to be a volume there.
Oh, okay.
And there's five families back there. I know there's a lot of cattle, but I don't know that a trucks entering sign would be warranted.
Okay.
So is it for, are you shaving down the hill for one person or are you shaving down the hill because it's a safety factor?
Again, there's no reported crashes at this location, and I I guess my feeling is if there was a problem, we would we would see the crashes.
So mostly, you'd say that be the individuals, but?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
But what I understood, what I thought I understood is that he was talking about bearing the cost of shaving down that hill himself?
That was Mr. Culligan last year, that is not Scott. Mr. Culligan owns the property directly, oh, what the heck would that be, southeast of the intersection? I don't know where Scott's property is, but Mr. Culligan offered to, you know, he's he asked if he could do that, and we said, yes, absolutely. There's not a whole lot of dirt there to be moved. The the thing to contend with is the power line, and we don't know where that's at.
The power company certainly would be able to go out and locate that, though, would they not?
Correct, absolutely.
So do they have an easement on in both the right-of-way and on private property for that?
They would have a utility, they they fill out the same permit that I would ask Scott or Mr. Culligan last year to, it's the same permit. It's installation of the utilities within the right-of-way or it's a excavation within the right-of-way permit. It's a, it's kind of the same thing. The commission actually has granted the the highway superintendent that authority to approve those permits.
Okay.
Do we have Scott Dirks here? Sir?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I'm Scott Dirks, live on one forty-fifth Avenue. Appreciate your time this morning, your time coming out yesterday, appreciate that, Commissioner, and the time I spent on the phone to you gentlemen yesterday. So there's a few things at issue here that that I'd like to explain a little bit. I know you've seen the agenda requests that I submitted. The first and primary issue is the speed. When you're pulling out from one forty-fifth Avenue, if you're going to make a left, which would be into the westbound, you, and I, no disrespect to to the Bible or whatever this manual is, I haven't read it, but there is not a lot of visibility of people coming over that hill at fifty miles an hour. I can tell you, there's there's been numerous times I've pulled out to go to work, take kids to school, things like that. You know, and you look left, you look right, you look left, and then I'm watching, I have to watch, you know, my backside when I pull out and somebody coming over that hill at fifty miles an hour there in your backseat. So that is a definite safety, safety issue with with the speed. And I'm asking, I understand there's no, there aren't any confirmed crashes, and I would, my argument would be that is only because we're extremely careful when we pull out, whether it's with semi trucks, ranch pickups and trailers, our vehicles going to work, going to school, daily, daily activities. I would, I would pose the argument that do we have to have a crash and does somebody have to get killed for us to get the speed limit changed? That's, I'm I'm looking at this preventative. It's been a thing that my family and other neighbors out there have worked on in the past, obviously. And with that development, there's more and more traffic. There's people that ride bikes, there's people that ride motorcycles all summer. The, was it three, three forty or three seventy-nine, whatever the the daily number was from?
It's three hundred and forty-nine as of this last traffic count we did and back in two thousand and four, when that development, before the development started, it was a hundred and seventy to a hundred and eighty.
So Joe, if, how would it hinder if you put thirty-five miles an hour there? I mean, how does it hinder a road if if I take it from fifty to thirty-five? I mean, am I going to make it so people are going to have more? I mean, what what would be the issues with that?
So what's going to happen is you're going to create a speed trap for law enforcement to ultimately, people are going to drive how they feel comfortable. In a mile stretch, that road, Lower Spring Creek, is Mark, probably what, ten, twelve miles long total?
Twelve, I believe.
So twelve, we're overlaying eight miles of it, past Old Folsom, going to the the south there this year. So you're creating a a speed from from the end, almost three quarters of it is at fifty miles an hour.
So I have a question. So on some curves that we go to, they say slow down twenty-five miles an hour. Have you ever seen those signs? Can you put something at the beginning of the hill or that area that's?
There already is one. There is a thirty-five mile an hour.
That was the warrant.
Yep, there is, there's a thirty-five mile an hour advisory plaque along with the hidden entrance sign.
And it's big enough so people can see that?
I don't know the size on it off the top of my head, but yeah, it's 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 regulations according to the MUTCD.
So Scott, that tells me even if you tell them to do thirty-five and we change that, sir, it sounds like they're going to do fifty anyway, like Joe's saying, they're just doing what they do. Because most people, if they look at something, they're either gonna follow that rule or they're not going to follow that rule. Do you see what I'm saying? If you've ever drove anything, you're either following that rule, we all have done it, we're doing a twenty-five at thirty-five. So if you have a sign there and people aren't already commonsensely listening to that, I don't think us saying, you know, take it down to thirty-five the whole road is is going to change what their speed limit's going to be. Maybe I'm wrong, so.
Man, we're we're not asking for the entire road. It's just, it's about a one-mile stretch. It's got hills, ups and downs, gullies, and then you've got a hill that right when you come into one forty-fifth Avenue, it's it's a blind intersection and there's, there's five families that live down there, all involved in ranching in some aspect or another. There's people in and out of there all the time. There's actually a a residence right across Lower Spring Creek, right at that intersection. Their driveway opens into Lower Spring Creek right there as well. And it's just, it's a it's a speed and a sight issue, so we, it's, it's a safety issue for us. And I would ask that that this, the speed limit is changed because I don't feel that we should have to wait until somebody gets killed or seriously injured, because that's going to most likely be someone that I'm related to.
So Scott and Joe, since this is a little bit of an issue that I think we need to look at as a board, is anybody opposed to continuing this so the rest of us can look at this?
Not at all.
And is that okay? That way we can come out and and see this for ourselves, Scott?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would welcome that at any time.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Scott, you know, one other suggestion I might have, I didn't think about it yesterday, but now that that family's moved into that schoolhouse, maybe you should, I know there's a couple of people on Radar Radar Hill Road that have put out children playing signs, and it's made of a difference where people do slow down for those children playing signs. You know where I'm talking about on Radar?
I don't.
When you're coming down off the hill?
Oh, in the box elder side.
In the box elder side, yeah. And I visually, I I see people put their brakes on when they see that children playing sign, so maybe that'd be a.
Bottom line, Joe, maybe we could meet with Scott and some of our commissioners if they want to come out there too and and find out if we can find some solution with this, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am, I would welcome that.
Do we have a motion to continue?
Move to continue.
My my father-in-law Larry Dickshot would like to speak before I'm.
That'd be fine, sir.
Before we're done.
We're going to make a motion and he can still speak. Okay.
Thank you.
So the motion is to continue to the, is it the sixteenth? Am I correct, the next meeting?
Correct.
Till June sixteen?
We don't have a second yet.
Motion by DeSanto, second by Roskinect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Sir, would you like to speak?
My name is Larry Dickshot. Uh, there has been a crash because I ran head on into a fellow. Only reason we didn't report it because he had four kids and he had several warrants out. But I ran head on into him right there coming out with a trailer.
And like I said.
So if, if anybody would come down there and look and see what we're talking about, there won't be any discussion after that. Thank you.
We're going to come down and see you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just full discussion, okay? So we're on to item nineteen. Reclassification of manufactured homes on permanent foundation. Commissioner LaCroy?
Thank you, Ms. Agguck. I, I had this put back on the agenda so we could have a discussion on it. There, when this originally come to us, it was put, Mr. Phillips had brought it forward and we had a discussion. And, um, at the original part of his paragraph, he's asking us to direct, uh, equalization director, um, to change the classification. That was at the end of his deal. So I think we need to make a, a vote on that, but I'd like to hear from Shannon too. And during that discussion, um, we had a lot of different discussions, Phil. I mean, I've had it put on the agenda so I get to speak first. So, um, what I'm, it got a little confusing for me because the commission put their, their trust in me to, to look into this since I had a lot of mobile homes. And me and you've had several discussions on, over this. And so I felt it was appropriate to bring it back on the agenda so we can hear Shannon's side of the reclassification number one. And I think the board itself needs to, to make a decision on what they want to do. And I think we need to make a vote on, because I was kind of, I had received a phone call and we're talking about a special committee to review this and go in with the laws. Phil, after careful review of this, and I'll let Shannon speak, but I mean, I can go through my notes, but I, I, I can't support.
Can I mention one thing?
Sure.
This morning, I talked with the state fire marshal. As of January first of two thousand and twenty, the state fire marshal was put in force of all HUD, HUD housing codes, be it stick-built site-built, manufactured. So in that, I presented him everything that I presented at the last meeting. And he's looking at it and if I could, I would like to table this until he has a chance to review this. Because he's the one that's going to have the say on all the HUD housing guidelines, manufactured site-built, stick-built, all them. And here now, he's double checking with his liaison in DC. So if we could table this until he gets back with his information that he could present to us, I think then we could make a more broader and solid, you know, determination.
So Phil, did he give you any indication on how long it might take for him to, to have a response?
I was standing outside, told him I'm running late for a commissioners meeting this morning. When I first came in is when I got off the phone. From what he reads and what he, uh, sees, he feels that, yeah, they should be reclassified as modulars, blah, blah, blah. Like we, I presented to you folks. But what he wants to do before he makes any final say is he wants to double check with DC, with his liaison at HUD, his boss. So that's why I'm asking to table it. So he, wait, he's got concrete proof and, you know, backup what he wants to say and say, yes, this is the right way to proceed.
Give me the, give me the name of that individual, please.
The fire marshal?
Yeah. Just the state fire marshal you're talking about?
Yes, in Pierre.
Okay.
I got his phone number if you'd like.
Okay. Please.
Yeah. Seven, seven, three.
Okay.
Three, five, six, two.
I, I don't, excuse me, Commissioner LaCroy. I don't disagree with what you're saying is that wait until we get a response from him. Uh, but I think we're going to need to make contact to find out when he would anticipate that so that we can reschedule it in a timely fashion for you.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying if we could just table this for a little bit until we hear more from him.
I don't, I don't know the state fire marshal at this point in time. Do you remember his name at all?
I want to say first name was Paul.
Okay. Oh, it's Paul, it's, uh, um, Ian Paul, I think. I think it's.
I just, in between.
That's okay.
Three phone calls and walking a job site this morning, so.
Okay. Commissioner LaCroy, turn to you.
I guess I, I'd probably want to hear from Shannon on his, uh, between the manufactured and re, about the reclassification. Because as I, Phil, as I start going through this and through all our discussions, we keep going to HUD and all these other different directions. I have to admit, I've learned a lot from you. You, you've got a lot of information and you're going to a lot of different places. But when I start going through this, when you want to change manufacturing or manufactured to modular, you know, it seems to me one of the things that I highlighted was the three twenty-eight, two, uh, thirty-two eighty-two point one-two, the National Manufactured Housing Construction and, and Safety Standard Act, which, you know, a lot of these, when these homes were made, they were, the manufacturers had the option to make them two standard building code standards, to make them modular or whatnot. And they found not to choose those codes. That's how they're classified. And this is what I was reading through all this. You know, we can go through all this stuff on foundations and how they're permanently, and then we get into the marrying of the, the land licenses and stuff, but you can separate those from what I'm reading afterwards and you, and you can do it. My concern that hit me probably about two, three days ago was that property owners need to know what they're buying, a buyer needs to know. So if we're changing something that wasn't manufactured as it states and we're changing, we're changing what it was actually manufactured as. And so I don't believe in that. You know, from the very beginning of this, when I was asked to try and take the look into this was, I'm in the same boat as you. You know, I have houses that are on foundations, have moved, mobile homes. And maybe over twenty years, they're not buying that, because we keep going over to a lot of different directions on this.
Oh, it's a spider.
And, yeah, and so bottom line is what I tell you from my own personal experience, I know the older mobile homes or even modulars aren't built to the standards that they are today. And that's why they're not classified. And I know that when I buy them, when I sell them and, and so forth. And to change what it was manufactured as, I don't believe is a good idea. And I've been over this and over this and I tried to see, I understand your frustration, I really do. But I can't support changing from modular to, or.
Manufactured.
Manufactured to modular. I, 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 I can't because there's, there's standards that are put in place and when you read through it, I can't support that. I don't know what the other commissioners feel. I just want to be honest with you because, you know, at the last meeting, we were talking about doing some legislation, changing things. I, I don't want to run you around.
Well, you've got three years of running around. I'm in great shape.
No, but I'm, I'm just, I don't want to give you any false hope. I don't, I don't support it. And I, I wouldn't, I would not bring this to a, a body that just because somebody wants it, if I don't support it and I don't believe in it.
Okay, so the motion today is to deny Mr. Phillips' request for a commission to direct the equalization department to reclassify manufactured homes on permanent foundations to the classification of modular homes. Um, Shannon, can you verify why that motion should be denied or, or should not be denied based on, uh, your facts and information, sir?
Okay. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. So, uh, Phil's home is a nineteen seventy-four double wide. It was built as a nineteen seventy-four double wide. And I will explain from the perspective of the county assessor. The state law defines actually two types of what we would commonly call trailer houses. There's a mobile home and a manufactured home. And there is a law that defines what a mobile home is and what a manufactured home is. Then there's another line, law that I've shared with the commission that directs the county assessor, real property for the purposes of ad valorem taxation includes manufactured homes as defined in statute and mobile homes as defined in statute. Uh, this does not, uh, apply to mobile and manufactured homes in the inventory of a dealer. The key part of that was the first few words, real property for the purposes of taxation includes mobile home and manufactured homes. Phillips' home here. His argument all along has been that, uh, he would like it classed as uh, real estate or real property. They're interchangeable terms i- in this argument. And state law already says they are. The law doesn't say anything about whether it's on a permanent foundation or any foundation at all. It just simply says mobile and manufactured homes are real property for tax purposes. So then we get a problem, uh, where we're looking at, uh, well, let's call it, uh, a modular. All right? Uh, and we talk about HUD standards. HUD standards are federal standards that govern the construction of homes. And this home was built according to HUD standards as a mobile or manufactured home. It was built that way. And the notes in the property record that we have in the county assessor's office identify it as a double wide. And Phil has a problem with that. He would like that changed to modular. But it was still built as a double wide. Phil and I have a disagreement to the extent of remodel and addition that has taken place. Uh, but regardless, it was built as a double wide. It was not built as a modular. It's still not a modular, but it definitely wasn't built as a modular. And I don't want to change or delete any information that we have on this property. Is what, uh, Commissioner LaCoy, LaCroy alluded to that would be deceptive to anybody looking at this property or at least our property record. And specifically the banks, uh, that Phil has a problem with and, and their lending. It is a double wide.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Shannon, from a, an appraiser standpoint or appraisal standpoint, I, I tend to agree with you. But I want Phil to realize that that shouldn't impact the market value.
No.
People could sit there and say, I know it, it's a mobile home. Thank you for telling me, but I'll still give you X amount of dollars.
Absolutely.
When you assess it, are you using comparable sales or are you using a cost? I'm just out of curiosity on improvements.
We will do both approaches to value on this type of property. So we will have an indication of value, uh, from both approaches to value. I'm not sure which approach we rely on for the current assessment.
If you, if I went out and looked at his residence and it looked to me more like a stick-built, even though, and I, even though I knew it was mobile. Would that, what I want as an appraiser probably lean towards stick-built or something that was more comparable, uh, based on its physical characteristics and attributes, opposed to looking for mobile homes? That's up to the appraiser, right?
Absolutely. Uh, as you say, uh, comparable sales, whatever sale property is mo, uh, most comparable to this, we will use that as a comparable sale. And yeah, there are, uh, there are a lot of properties that when we use the sales comparison approach to value, we will use a mix of mobile or stick-built homes as comparable sales. Uh, in certain locations, there's only so many sales that are available anyways. All of that is an argument about the value and that's never been an issue here. No. Uh.
No, I just, uh.
What, what you're stating is, is it, uh, it could be a mobile home that has a very high value or it could be a modular that has a low value. All of those properties exist. Value is not the issue here. Uh, my, my problem is, is I, I will not hide a piece of information on this property for the purposes of deceiving somebody else.
And I totally agree with that. My point was that even if you, even if you did, that's not going to change the value.
Absolutely, yes.
Value is the value. It's what somebody will pay for the property.
We, we, we could all agree here, it's a trailer house, but it's still, uh, only worth this much. We could say it's a tree house and it's still only worth this much. Yeah. It'll always be assessed at market value regardless of what we call.
Right, that's the point that I was trying to make.
Commissioner DeSanto.
The bottom line here is what, what Phil is looking for is the ability, um, to allow a buyer to get a conventional or HUD or FHA loan, um, on this property to make it more sellable.
Yeah.
Um, because even if someone agreed to pay what he's asking for it, they would not be able to qualify under this classification for those particular types of loans. And therefore would either have to come up with cash or just go get a, I'm sorry, added conventional loan in there or go, go, go get a conventional loan, which has made it almost impossible for him to sell it for what some people do believe it's worth, but can't get the loan to purchase it.
Right.
Um. Woman?
So Phil, um, wants us to postpone this until he gets an answer and I think that's what we should do. Then you can come back, Phil, and, and discuss it again. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair. Make a motion to continue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And when would we like to continue it, Phil?
I think indefinitely until we get a response back from.
Make a motion to con, or I'll change that motion to continue indefinitely until we get a response back from the fire marshal.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
I'm not going to disagree with the, with the continuance, but I don't think it's going to change a thing. And, and I respect Shannon's opinion. Um, I, I completely respect that Shannon frankly says this, he'll refuse to change it. And I understand why.
But Phil, if Phil wasn't fighting this this long and he wanted to bring it back and he hasn't worked this hard, I'd probably change my mind, but.
Yeah, I know, I understand.
I'll, I'll give him the chance to bring the fire marshals back. I know Shannon's giving me the look, but, um, anyway, um, Phil, we're going to have another discussion on this once you get that answer, sir. So that's our, that's our motion today. Okay?
Yeah, and I'd just like to add, this just ain't me. There's other folks that have two thousand fours, two thousand tens.
Yes, sir.
That are in the same position. This just ain't me. I'm fought this far. I was ready to throw the towel in six months ago and the wife says, no, we've got all these other folks that we've learned about that are in the same boat, so.
Okay, so we're going to postpone indefinitely and then when you want to put it back on the agenda, you call Holly with that answer from the fire marshal or anything other pertinent information that would add to that, sir.
Okay.
Okay?
Madam Chair.
Just, just for some clarification for Phil, you know, at the last meeting, we kind of let him on that we're going to do some legislation and I would feel. And as I said, at the last meeting, we kind of let on that we're going to try and do some legislation. And I'd asked for some information from you that you said somebody was working for and you couldn't provide it and so forth. And as I just stated earlier, I can't, I can't present something I don't support. So I'm not going to work on any type of stuff like that. I mean, if Mr. Drews or somebody else wants to help you, that'd be great. But for now, my biggest thing is when I read the codes and I know how they're built, that's where I'm standing with this. And I've got five mobile homes and I'm in the same boat, so I mean.
I, I understand.
So I, I just, it, to me, it's all about the building standards.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from.
All right.
Madam Chair.
We do have a motion to continue.
Well, in closing, I was just going to say, I, I, I don't think there's anybody here that can change what you need to be changed. I think we need to go to the lenders or somebody, the lenders are the ones that are, uh, doing this. It's not the commission and it's not the state, so.
That's the frustration.
It's a lending practice that we should try to change. That would be my opinion.
Yeah.
I know it's a.
Okay, we have a motion to continue indefinitely. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Okay, do we want to break or do we want to keep moving?
Break, break, break.
Okay, we're going to have a.
I took mine.
Move for a five-minute recess.
Okay, five-minute recess, thank you.
Second.
Sorry, we've been sitting here a while.
Aye.
Ready? Motion to come out of recess?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mark, second by Gary. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Ms. Brittany, consent agenda for the planning and zoning, please, Mr..
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Muller, Planning Director. Item twenty is the consent agenda. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following item. Item A is second reading, reading of ordinance amendment OA twenty dash zero one, Pennington County to amend section five oh seven, construction permits, to supersede section five oh seven A, erosion and stormwater control, and to amend section five eleven fees to set fees regarding stormwater permits of the Pennington County zoning, zoning ordinance, and approval is recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Brittany. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this item? If not, is there any commissioner who would like to speak on this item? If not, do we have a motion, please?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made by Drews.
Second.
Second made by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Jason.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thenderson, County Planner. Agenda item B is rezone twenty dash zero two and Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty dash zero two to rezone six point three acres from limited agriculture district to suburban residential district, and to change a future land use from planned unit development sensitive to suburban residential district. The applicant is Dick Compass. He is in the audience. If you have any questions for him. Surveyor and engineer is Renner Associates. Site location is east of Keystone along Highway forty. The board has seen this property before, earlier this year on April seventh. You approved layout plan twenty dash zero four to combine lots in order to create Lot One R of Chase Elcorn subdivision with eight conditions. If approved, this request will satisfy condition number three of that layout plan.
Think, do you have a motion?
Move for approval.
Move by La Croix.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Did you have any discussion, sir? Okay, are you Dick Compass? I didn't figure you had too much after that. Thank you for your patience today waiting for us too, sir. Next is items from the chair and commission members. Let's go with Lloyd first on the right side this time.
We give him the report or just our committee reports?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
You know, I'll always come back for seconds because I'll forget something. I'll do a pretty good job here. I did attend the MacArthur Grant. They had a workshop that we were supposed to do. And I forget where it was supposed to be, but anyhow, they did a YouTube conference. And I, and I was a panelist for one of the workshops, me and the mayor from St. Louis is where, the mayor from St. Louis, and another county commissioner, National League of Cities chairperson and a NACO chairperson. All of them, we were all on that workshop. And that went fairly well. First time I ever had to be a chair and be asked questions and, I'm not chair, but a part of a board. But that went well. We represented Pennington County well, got some good questions. Liz Hazel did a good job as far as getting me prepared and even some comments that they can do online and so forth. I did catch part of the community health Zoom board meeting. I was a little bit late, so I just got on the tail end of that, but they're doing their precautions. Typical to the regular hospital and community health places doing their scans before they come in and so forth. And I can't confirm that, but I, I meant to ask Dustin when he was here, I, I thought they'd, they said with the new Civic Center Center, they'd gotten eight. They have eight clients. Am I wrong or was that?
Oh, you're right.
Something along those lines.
Something like that.
Something along those lines, so they are getting utilized and then it seems like I remember they were asking if they could provide some of the service to help do that. So like I said, I caught the tail end of that, so I didn't catch all, all of the report, but I think that's spoken all that out to report on right now.
Don't we talk?
Until you, until we get to Mark, then I might remember something.
I don't, I don't have anything to report. The, the eight or ten, are they did they test positive for COVID or are they just? Are they in the?
I said, I didn't catch that. It may be systematic, maybe.
Sir, I heard that there were sixteen positive, one symptomatic, and this was like two days.
Oh, okay.
So they changed it.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else. I don't have.
So we went to the fire service. Of course, we worked on the budget and that was submitted. EOC, we all learned about that today with the protesters. A lot of good people in there doing a lot of hard work, and I'll just tell you again and again. We have COVID and then we have the protesters. That just adds a lot to our first responders at this time. A lot of issues and a lot of hard work, not that they don't, aren't used to hard work. It just is a, is a lot. So to commend them is why I did that, because they are going above and beyond. And then they did have an opening for the fairground stall barn, but I learned on Saturday and then didn't find out until about ten after ten that they're having it at ten thirty, so I didn't have time to contact anybody, but I'm just saying I'm disappointed about that. How that happened, because we, as commissioners, worked hard on that and gave them money in order to finalize that stall barn, so kind of a disappointment to me and not being able to, not for me personally, but this commission that this is amazing project for them, and you guys were a part of that, and there was other people I would have liked to have thanked, you know, like Kale again, that would have never happened. He, he comped his time and other people, so kind of a disappointment, but anyway, it is done. It's going to make a huge difference.
What they, I guess I didn't know either. They had an opening for it?
Yeah, to show it and.
Ribbon cutting or just showing or?
I don't know. So that's why I said I didn't really get it. And then they also got the high school. Mark, didn't they get the high school rodeo, the big?
Still working on it. The National High School Rodeo Championships may be coming to Rapid City.
It actually is because Ron called me the other day.
He did, okay.
So, yeah, so that tells me again, our he, you and Lloyd are the people representing them that you don't even know about these things, so. I would appreciate if they give us more emails and more information, if you could reiterate that when things are coming down the pipe, especially for this commission. I mean, we, we love it. It's not because we want to be angry. It's like we love what they're doing and we want to be a part of that, so. Anyway, that's about it. So, Ron.
Ron indicated to me that that rodeo, the impact that would have had on the economy in Nebraska was they figured it was going to be twelve to sixteen million.
Right.
And so pretty significant. We could get that in Rapid City in July.
Sorry, Ron, let me, let me, before I get, you get off subject, I'm turning.
Pulling Lloyd?
I didn't. They are deciding if they're going to do the fair. So they're waiting to see, I think their decision's going to be on June sixteenth, but June fifteenth, they're going to decide if they're having the rally or something at that time, too, and then we will decide if they're having the fair, but they'd like to come through to us and make sure we, that we are all in approval of moving that forward. So I appreciated that they called me and, and told me, you know, that we'd like to talk to the commissioners. Hopefully they did, all of you.
Yep.
Okay, sorry, Ron.
Only one I really attended, and that was Gary and I attended it via Zoom, and that was the Building Committee a couple of weeks ago. And there's a lot of discussion on what to do with the La Crosse Street facility. I recommended having three commercial realtors look at the property and then give us an idea what they think it's worth. And, and some kind of a proposal, so yesterday I just got some information back from Mike Cool indicating that two realtors have looked at the building and both of them expressed interest in doing the marketing on it. And today we have a Zoom meeting at two o'clock, and we'll probably go into that a little bit more deeper and then bring it in front of the commission and make a formal proposal on maybe putting the building on the market and trying to divest itself of a piece of real estate.
Nice. Commissioner DeSanto.
Madam Chair, didn't have any committee meetings, did talk to, to Ron, Jeffries from the Fair Board. He did call me also and asked me if, if they could count on our support for not only the high school rodeo finals, but the fair as well. And I told him that he could count on mine anyway. Didn't want to speak for the rest of you, but.
Tell them June seventeenth, we'll tell our answer.
Other than that, my committee meetings have all been pushed out a couple of weeks, and so I'll, I'll be meeting with the Fair Board on Monday, this upcoming Monday, and extension and so forth, so won't have anything to report till our next meeting for the most part. Oh, I actually would like to say one thing. I, not only did I sit in the EOC the other night and observe the cooperation between Rapid City Police Department, Highway Patrol, and the Sheriff's Department, and how well they handled that whole situation, but I also went downtown and, and in and amongst the officers and the protesters. And I want to compliment both the Rapid City Police, the Sheriff's Department, and the Highway Patrol on the way that they handled verbally and physically the protesters. They were, they were extremely good at calming down situations. It seemed like they were starting to get out of hand. They were extremely good at finding people that were wanting to escalate the situation and, and either removing or, or calming down those people that wanted to escalate the situation. And frankly, you know, our protests here in Rapid City, we got to give a lot of compliments to, to the police sheriffs and Highway Patrol because we didn't have anything really get out of hand. And, and we're probably one of the only towns that didn't have things get out of hand, so kudos to our law enforcement.
Absolutely.
I, can I follow up on that a little bit? I need to clarify that Tuesday after we got done with polling stations, you have to have two people come down from two different parties to drop off all the material and stuff. So me and Sherry were in one of my old truck with my name on the side because mine was the shop. When we were leaving one of those caravans, four, five vehicles that were driving through were coming down St. Joe. I left about three or four of them ago, and then I wasn't going to wait anymore at the stop sign, so I went, so I was in the middle of waving at Helen and Kevin down here in the corner, so I wasn't part of the group. I just cut.
You say that now.
That isn't what they said at the EOC when I was watching it.
Madam Chair. Just a point of clarification on the high school rodeo. The, Ron Jeffries has, has made the application for it, and I think we're one of two or three. The final award hasn't been granted yet, but they're anticipating that soon to hear whether or not this is going to be coming to Rapid City.
Nice.
And Madam Chair, if I may. I heard Commissioner La Croix your question when I was in the office. As of yesterday, when I asked Barry, seventeen positive plus one symptomatic is in the shelter as of yesterday.
So Ms. Holly, you brought up Resolutions Black Hills Associated County Commissioners as well, so are we needing to do something with that today?
Just another opportunity for the board to present an idea if there's something you wish to move forward, but.
Well, if there's anything to, Holly, that you have seen, you've been here with us a long time, that you see that this board should think about moving forward, that would be nice, too, because you're part of us when we're trying to move resolutions or anywhere in the county here with our staff, department heads and stuff, that we need to put as resolutions would be good to support. And you see, would be nice for you to bring forward with your staff. Next, we'll have approval of vouchers.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by La Croix, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Items from John. Go ahead, John. You're the only public here. He has a big wave. I guess that means no public comment. Next would be executive session, SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two and personnel one dash twenty-five dash two dash one. So all in fa, or all in favor. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Moved by Drews, second by, by La Croix. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Okay, motion to come out of executive session.
They'll move.
Move, second.
By DeSanto, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. First motion, Commissioner Ross Connect.
I move to authorize the Highway Department to hire one maintenance worker for the wall division.
Second.
Motion by Ross Connect, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
I move to authorize the Highway Department to hire one maintenance worker for the Underwood Division.
Motion by Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Commissioner La Croix.
I'd make a motion to approve the reclassification of Helena how do you pronounce? Duschno, to transport officer and to be, be placed at the scale effective with a start date June twenty-eighth, pay period grade eleven, step two at seventeen eighty-three per hour.
Second.
Motion by La Croix, second by Ross Connect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I'd make a motion to move Jordan Nelson from grade fourteen, step four, twenty-one fifteen per hour, to grade nineteen, steps twenty-six oh one per hour, and to start the pay period following achievement of a registration nursing license. And last movement of December nineteenth, COLA.
Don't need it.
Don't need that piece. I didn't think so. So it's once she gets a registered nursing license.
Okay, motion made by La Croix, her second.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
I'd make a motion to move Michelle Meyer from grade twenty to step eleven, thirty ninety-one per hour to off scale as a certified nurse practitioner at four thousand thirty-eight point four six, biweekly, last movement annual and correct step. No, don't need all that.
Motion made by La Croix, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.